Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting of Monday, November 9th, 2020 to order. First off, any disclosure of PNA interests? Seeing none. Need a mover and seconder for approval of the agenda? Moved by Counsel Frank, second by Counsel Sharp. Moved by Counsel Frank, second by Counsel Sharp, resolved that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of November 9th, 2020 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. It's Charles here. All right. Up next, we have item 7.1, verbal update from Charles Harnick, the Integrity Commissioner. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope all is well and everyone is well. I am, I will be very brief. I am reporting to counsel that a specific complaint between two counselors has been terminated. That's really the most I can say about it in order not to offend Section 4.1 of the, of Bylaw 14-73, under which the complaint was, was brought. But I am obligated to report to counsel that the complaint has been terminated, and that's the extent of my report. So I'm merely here to comply with the section.
Great. Thank you very much, Charles. Looks like we have some questions. Counsel Vardy?
Yes, can you tell me why the report was terminated, please?
No. If I do that, I might be disclosing confidential information. I don't want to do that. And I don't want to take any questions regarding the, my reasons, which have been delivered to the, the complainant and the respondent.
That's a disappointment.
All right, Counsel Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Can I ask the clerk if we could have a report at the next meeting on how many complaints have been filed since the August 17th meeting and the costs that have been incurred since then? This is not for Mr. Harnick. This would be for the clerk to respond to.
Yes, so the number of complaints and the financials incurred to date?
From the, since the August 17th meeting, when we had the last update from Mr. Harnick and we, we dealt with the, the issues that were at hand at that time. I just wondered how many have come forward since then? How many have been resolved or outstanding and what the costs are to date for those?
Okay, I can follow up with our Integrity Commissioner and provide an update.
Thank you very much. That's great.
Counsel Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. My question to Charles Harnick is, was the complaint terminated by the Integrity Commissioner or by the, the complainant?
Again, I don't, I don't want to get into specifics, but it was terminated by me.
Thank you. All right. So one other question.
All right, Counsel Sharp.
Was there any investigation done or was, was it just terminated?
There was due consideration made of the issues by me.
Okay, thank you.
After a review of materials that were filed.
Thank you.
Counsel Vardy?
Yes, I wonder, Mr. Harnick, if you can describe for me the difference so that I understand between an investigation and due consideration? Because I believe these reports should be made public.
Well, I, you know, that's neither here nor there. I reviewed the material that was provided to me by the complainant. I made determination based on that material and I determined that I would terminate the investigation.
So if you could just explain for me, because I'm having trouble with this, the difference between you looking into a complaint and terminating it, reviewing the material, and that's not an investigation, that's just a termination?
I, I reviewed the material that was put in front of me and determined on the basis of that material, not to proceed further with an investigation. That's all I'm going to say about it.
It's unfortunate.
All right, seeing no further questions. Thank you very much, Charles, and have a good rest of your evening.
You too. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counsel.
All right, we need a mover and seconder to receive the IC report. Moved by Counsel Sharp, second by Counsel Dunstall. Moved by Counsel Sharp, second by Counsel Dunstall, resolved that the verbal update from the Integrity Commissioner be received. All in favor? That's carried. We moved to Section 7.2, Resolutions. And do you want to get a mover and seconder and then we'll just, if there's any discussion? Pardon? Mover is Counsel Frank, yes. And seconder? Counsel Bothwell? Counsel Frank?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very simple motion. As we all know, that on earlier this year, there was a third-party investigation, which was brought forward, which was to deal with a third-party workplace investigation, and it was brought forward, the, the, the study was done by Mr. John Curtis. The report was, was taken to counsel, brought to counsel on June the 4th. And at that council meeting, there was a number of recommendations that was put forward, which counsel agreed to. And there's been no follow-up to that particular report or those recommendations. And I would like to recommend that staff, I would think the clerk, maybe legal, would bring forward a report at the next meeting so that we know how, if those recommendations were followed. It's pretty simple. I don't want to get into more details because I know it's sensitive. And I welcome anyone else who wants to comment on it. That's my, that's my motion, so go from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Counsel Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I reviewed Counsel Frank's motion, and I think that it just might be more appropriate, and I would respectfully ask for a friendly amendment to, to your motion, so that it reads, "Resolved that the clerk be directed to present a report to the next, next council meeting, covering the status of the action items and recommendations related to the third-party workplace investigation report presented to counsel by Mr. John Curtis at the special closed council meeting held on June 4th, 2020, and that the report detail if the suspension action by the mayor adhered to the municipal act and all applicable workplace policies and legislation, and that the report detail whether the actions taken by council in the February 10th resolution were validated in the opinion of the investigator." And I'm, I'm putting that friendly motion forward because amendment.
That's a point of order. Mr. Mayor, I think that changes the, the intent. So I don't know if you can do a friendly amendment to that, or you would have to do, make an actual amendment.
I tend to disagree with that. It's all, it's all relative to the report.
I agree with the report, but to continue with the intent to ask the investigator if, if, in his opinion, everything's been followed. That's not what the, the motion actually read.
I think that from legal.
So we could do this in two ways. If the mayor or the clerk feel that the additions that I've made to the, the two paragraphs should be a separate motion, then we can split the motion into two and vote on them separately. But I see them combined. I was just going to, the rationale for, for my portion of the amendment to the, to the motion is that at the February 10th open session resolution, it's, it's started this investigation and denounced the actions of the mayor in putting the staff member on admin leave without consulting counsel. And the resolution also put the individual back into the workplace with a formal apology before a proper investigation. It's in the public interest and important that the report request it also disclose if the suspension action by the mayor adhered to the municipal act and all applicable workplace policies and legislation, and whether the actions taken by council in that resolution of February 10th were validated in the opinion investigator. This type of disclosure statement is needed to reassure the public and the citizens that we represent, that any future potential similar actions taken under the municipal act or employment workplace acts and regulations are transparently correctly and legally applied by both the mayor and council. Because I, if I were in a position of deputy mayor, I would want to make sure that I'm acting appropriately, should the same.
Once again, that's another point of order. We can't, we shouldn't be having this discussion in open like this.
So that's the reason for the amendment? So if, if the mayor chooses to split the.
We should not be doing this in open session. This is just a way to get around the rules. Come on, everybody knows better. If we're going to have this discussion, which I don't mind, let's do it in closed session. We're just trying to bypass rules.
Sorry, I'd like to interject that this is a procedural clarification from that motion that I'm asking that, that, that we can in this motion clarify that the procedures and the, the role of the mayor was properly adhered to.
Once again, that's a point of order. That was in documentation that was not privy to the public. And with that, there, you know, well, I can't speak to it. I could speak lots to this. But that is not, that, that's, that's totally out of line. Yeah, yeah.
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I think there is a motion to amend, so we will vote on the motion to amend by Counsel Bothwell first. Counsel Bothwell, I'm sorry, do you mind sending that to me? Is that okay? I can't, oh, you're muted. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address the clerk on this issue. I believe this issue's been discussed in closed session. I think we're doing a reconsideration here, and I think it needs to go back to closed session.
The original motion is directing staff to bring up report, right? And that, that report would be coming back to a closed session. Right now, however, there is a request for a motion to amend, so we would be voting on that motion. And once that vote happens, we will see whether the original motion should be voted on, which would be the original resolution.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
With respect, Madam Clerk, I believe we discussed this issue in closed session. And I believe that the issue that's being addressed, whether you try and cover it up as a, some motion or something else, it's been discussed closed session. I suggest strongly, very strongly, that we go into closed session if we want to continue this conversation. If, if it's that important to everybody, then there's no problem going into closed session. But the issue, and I can't say it because it was done in closed session, but we are contravening other rules that were made in closed session. So I suggest strongly, if we're going to continue this conversation, that we take it to closed session and discuss it openly there. Not to try and, you know, out somebody here, or try and let people look bad and go backwards and to go around the rules. That's not the way it's intended. If we want to have this discussion, we're discussing issues that we did already discuss in closed session. And I am willing to explain that in closed session. I'm not going to violate the rules. Sorry.
Make a motion to go into closed session, Counsel Vane. You have to make a motion to go into.
Put a motion forward. Yes, thank you, Counsel Sharp. I would do that motion then.
Did you receive?
That's the appropriate place to discuss.
I'll second that.
Did you receive the email, Sarah?
Yes, I have. I'm just going to look it up. So I just want to clarify that the amendment included wording that, and that the report detail if the suspension action by the mayor adhered to the municipal act and all applicable workplace policies and legislation, and that the report detail whether the actions taken by council in the February 10th resolution were validated in the opinion of the investigator. If counsel would like to speak more on this matter, on the closed session matter, we can go into closed right now.
Well, second that motion made by Counsel Vane.
Excuse me, but isn't there already a motion on the table? So.
Nobody. We want to go into closed session to discuss the motion that's on the table, Counsel Vardy.
Can we have a ruling by the clerk whether for what we're trying to accomplish, it has to go into closed?
For an, under for an identifiable individual, if we're to speak about this individual and the report.
Being that I started this motion out, I think that what's been said, we can stop at that. There's nothing more we should go into closed session to discuss. I think what's been said is out there now anyway, so let's include it in the motion. I'll accept a friendly amendment. And let's just move forward with what we've got. With that very short amendment by Counsel Bothwell, I mean, it's, it's out there. It said, let's, and I don't think anyone, anything, anything specific or anybody's name specifically has been mentioned. I think we're safe. And I don't think we need to go into closed session and discuss this any further. That's my thoughts. Leave it to the clerk if otherwise.
Going to closed session. I believe that stuff has already been said that shouldn't have been said, and I believe some people have put themselves in a bad position. And again, we're trying to avoid complaints, yet we keep trying to bend the rules and get around them. So you know what? You can have it both ways. So I believe we need to go in closed session. Just because you leak something doesn't make it okay. It's like you can't stab somebody and say, oh, sorry, I feel bad for it. I will do it again. It doesn't work that way. You break the rules, you break the rules.
Yeah, can we just have order and stop all the side talk, please? Thank you.
Mayor Jordan, may I have the floor?
While the clerk is preparing the motion to go into closed.
Yes? I can't hear you. You're, you're unmuted.
All right, once we get the mover and seconder, we can discuss, we can debate on going into closed.
Okay, I got my hand up first.
All right.
Thanks.
Hold on that.
I'd just like to state that everything that I stated was in the public realm and public domain, and nothing was within closed session.
All right, we have the resolution here. Moved by Counsel Vane, second by Counsel Sharp, resolved that council meeting closed session regarding the following under Section 2392B, personnel matter, but identifiable individual workplace investigation involving an identifiable individual. Discussion, do you need to clear the, re-clear that discussion? First, or are we going to just? Yeah. Is there a discussion whether we go into closed? Counsel Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. First of all, can I ask the clerk to read the emotion as amended, or the mayor, or one of you?
I have the amendment, so I'll read it. "Resolved that the clerk be directed to present a report to the next council meeting covering the status of the action items and recommendations related to the third-party workplace investigation report presented to counsel by Mr. John Curtis at the special closed council meeting held on June 4th, 2020, and that the report detail if the suspension, suspension action by the mayor adhered to the municipal act and all applicable workplace policies and legislation, and that the report detail whether the actions taken by council in the February 10th resolution were validated in the opinion of the investigator."
Okay, so where I'm getting here is that in order to clarify those, whether or not, what Counsel Bothwell is, is asking for amendment is that to clarify if the mayor was justified, one, and to clarify if counsel was justified, two. And the conclusions about that report would have to be disclosed, or at least inferred about an identifiable individual, our staff, in order to, in order to clarify whether or not. Like, so this is a workplace investigation, so like the outcome of the investigation is about our staff, and it's about, there are a number, a large number of people who were, whom are identifiable, and in this report. And so to, so I'm not sure if, but the question that I would say is that this should be discussed in closed, and I think that the report would have to come in closed. And, and so I'm not sure what the point of this is. All right, but we can discuss it in closed because I'd like to bring up something that Counsel Vane was talking about, a resolution that we've already had in closed session to the same effect of this. So that, with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Counsel Ritchie, did you want to speak?
If we're going into closed, I'll reserve it until we get into closed. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Dunstall.
Sorry about that. Four more. I'm unmuted, I hope. Thank you, your worship. I'm prepared to vote in favor of this motion from Counsel Frank. And I, I don't understand the friendly amendment and what the purpose of it is. It's that we're asking the clerk to bring a report at our next meeting, which we then would go into closed session and discuss all that would have come out of that investigation, that it has not been followed up or continued. And so I'm, I'm not sure what this friendly amendment, its purpose is. I'm not prepared to, to vote in, going into favor in the closed session. I will vote for the original motion, and that's, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Cadwell? Okay. Appears Counsel Cadwell has lost connection. Counsel Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'm just going to clarify again for those who have asked the, why I am asking for this. And again, it is a follow-up to the February 10th resolution, which is an open, where it states that where, and the motion reads, and whereas the mayor acted without consulting counsel. Sorry, where the administrative leave imposed on Tuesday, February 4th was not a decision of counsel, and whereas the mayor acted without consulting counsel, and whereas counsel confirms that CEO Harry Schlang was not being investigated, nor is he being accused of any misconduct. So the, the intent is, and whereas the mayor acted without consulting counsel, is a procedural, a procedural under the municipal act. It's under, is it under his authority or not? And we never did get that. You know, this was, this motion was written by counselors, not legal. It doesn't say that on behalf or as directed by legal, this resolution was put forward. It was, it was put forward by counselors. So we haven't received clarification that the mayor acted appropriately or not within his, his role. And I'm, I'm just, as a precaution, if I were a deputy mayor, I would want to know what would I do in the same situation? And using this motion and resolution as an authority is not, to me, is not, doesn't draw closure to it as to whether the mayor did or did not act appropriately. So I think it's really important that, that we as counselors and the public know what the decision on that was, or what the procedure should be in future, so that, so that should something else similar come forward, we know how to act. And, and I, I have not, I don't see that in the report, and I don't see that being clarified, and that's the purpose of this. Thank you.
Counsel Ritchie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I need for clarification, are you asking for a legal opinion as to what you should do if you're ever deputy mayor? Because asking for clarification of what the mayor did, if or if that was not in the report, is a reconsideration of a motion, because we have discussed that it will not be given to the public. The report is there for those reasons, so that's why I asked those questions. Now, we can go into closed session, discuss this. But that, the motion after February 10th that stated that, that, that the report was to be kept confidential, this here could be opening up things that goes against that motion. Therefore, I would say that part of your motion is a reconsideration. I have no problem with Counsel Frank's original motion. But when you go on to look deeper and deeper into what that report said, to try and, and, and put that out to the public. I mean, if you're looking for clarification, if you're going to be deputy mayor, or whoever's going to be deputy mayor, then we can get an opinion piece from, from a lawyer who's going to state that, you know, depending on certain actions, you may have that authority, you may not. That's why almost every single time it gets challenged in the courts, and then the courts decide. And they're the only people who can decide whether the mayor's actions is correct or not. And even for us, that's not where this went. It's an opinion piece. So I, I think that it's a reconsideration of a motion. If we're asking for those, if we're looking for clarification as to what we should be doing, then we have that opportunity to, yes, we can, but that opinion piece is just going to come back and state clearly that it all depends on the circumstances.
Counsel Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. My comment to this, so I made the resolution on February 10th. And the resolution, I don't have it in front of me, but from my memory, is that the mayor did not consult counsel when he made the decision, which, which is true, and for whatever reason, that it was a statement, and that the CEO was not being investigated, and at the time, he wasn't being investigated. And that resolution actually launched the investigation that we're talking about right now. I, I made the resolution to, to launch this investigation on February 10th. And the resolution apologized on behalf of counsel, not the mayor. And the mayor, as a head of council, speaks for the nine of us. And so, so those things happened. And we have finished the report. It is. We have finished a report. It is confidential personnel matter. And, and we're. We've, we've all, the council has seen it. We've, we've been able to sit with the clerk privately and read through. It's a long report, like hundreds of pages. And a lot of personal information about many staff members. And. The result. You can see is that we didn't suspend our CAO.
And counselors, that's.
We didn't suspend our CAO. And so. We're not able to discuss this. And I think that the intent of this. Motion is to, to, to bring the report to. To an open session. And, and I think that the only. Outcome could be to bring a report in closed session. And like I had just mentioned, we have all already seen the report. We all already know the outcome. And, and I truly feel that. The intent of this. Amendment is to. Is to bring a portion of the report. That is confidential in a, in a, in a public meeting. And so I'm also okay not to go into closed session if we don't make this amendment. That we, that we bring a report. I'm okay with that. But I think the report has to come in closed session and it would come next meeting, not this meeting. So thank you guys. To the mayor, if this amendment gets made. I would like to separate. The motion or split the motion. Is, is that, can, can the clerk? Confirm that that's allowed?
Sarah?
So the.
Are we already in a motion? We're in a motion to go into closed session right now. I'm sorry.
Yes. So just to clarify, I think there is the original motion, the main motion brought forward by Counselor Frank. And there's been a motion request to amend the main motion by Counselor Bothwell. So council can choose to. Go into close to discuss if council believes that they will be discussing about an identifiable individual or the report, which is confidential in nature. If not. Yes. I'm just clarifying the process for that. And then once. Council decides whether to go into close, that depends on whether there are. Any items to be talked about, discussed regarding a. The closed report or an identifiable individual. And then we'll come back and vote on the amendment and then the main motion. That would be the order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Counselor Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have absolutely no problem with splitting this into two motions, but. I would think in both cases, we'll probably end up in closed session anyways, even with my motion. So I think that, I think the clerk has already pretty much explained that. We can split it into two motions. I have no problem with that. The only amendment I would see if that's the case, then is that the clerk and. Legal come to the next with this to, to address this, the recommendations in this report. I would like to see Counselor Bothwell's amendment. Separately, but I would also think it's probably very valid point she's making as well. So. If we can word that in such a way that we don't have to go into close, because I think we'll be going to close to discuss this tonight. That's what will be for the rest of the night. And I, I, and, and because I don't, I just don't want to see that happen tonight. I think it's the wrong time. We won't have any legal opinions there. We won't have any legal advice. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know the story. So can we just split this into two? And. Vote on it? And let's, it'll, it'll be enclosed, I'm sure, next time around. It'd be nice to have it in public, but I don't think that's going to happen. But anyways, that's my, that's my thoughts on it. And I welcome any, any more. Comments to it. So that's just to simplify it. I think that's what we should do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so procedurally, we're at the point where we vote to not go into closed and then, and then take. Vote on the separate, on the amendment separately. But Counselor Ritchie?
I'm against going into close, so.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I believe that Counselor Bothwell's amendment there is a reconsideration of a motion.
You get the clerk to clarify that?
That's what I'm waiting for.
So we can vote on the reconsideration that, on the reconsideration motion, which would happen before the amendment motion. Just to clarify, we can't really split the. Motion because the main motion actually doesn't have much to be split, right? It's your motion plus an addition. So that's why the amendment has to be voted separately, not a motion to split.
What I'm suggesting is my motion go through as it is. With this, with a small amendment that when instead of staff, it would be you, the clerk. And possibly legal that brings that information back to council.
Right. And then Counselor Bothwell added the two paragraphs. So we'll vote on that first. A motion to amend has to happen first and then your main motion.
I'd also like to call for a recess for this motion to be sent out to everyone. So we all have an opportunity to read it. So that we can, we can clarify if it's a reconsideration of a motion or not. And if it is a reconsideration of a motion, depending on how we vote in, in closed session, Counselor Bothwell may not even be able to bring that forward.
Do we need to go into recess for that?
I'll defer to what the clerk tells us we need to do. She makes the final call on this.
My order.
So the mayor will be making the call on the recess portion.
Yeah, I'm quite, I'm quite happy to go into recess right now to, to make that call. Five-minute recess. Welcome, welcome back, everyone. So we have the first resolution on the table. I guess Counselor Sharp. Counselor Sharp spoke already, didn't he? Yeah, so he spoke already. Yeah, everyone spoke at least once on this, so, so I'll read the resolution to move into closed right now. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Sharp, resolve that council meet in closed session regarding the following under. Section two, three, nine, two B personnel matter about an identifiable individual workplace investigation involved. Being an identifiable individual, and this is a recorded vote. And the clerk's going to read it.
Counselor Bothwell? Counselor Dunstall?
No.
Counselor Frank?
No.
Counselor Cadwell?
No.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
No.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
No.
Mayor Jordan? Sorry, just to clarify, we're experiencing a little bit of technical difficulty, so we'll resume once we're back online. Thank you.
All right. So just to the public, we're going to momentarily stop the live stream and reset it. Cause we're having problems and hopefully this, the reset will eliminate the problems. So we'll be back in a minute. Thank you.